Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 15th, meeting of the school board of the Dover area school district. If you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Banker, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton, Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
And Mr. Rahouser.
Here.
Two absent.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, we are removing one item from the agenda. On tonight's agenda, there was going to be a revision to the Dover High School graduation date. We've had some conversations in executive session regarding that, and I'll allow Mrs. Maylie to elaborate on that.
From what we understood, there was some disappointment, I guess, over the change in the graduation date, especially among students. And typically, we don't decide on the graduation date and venue until March historically, February, March. So, we are kind of taking the stand, so maybe we don't need to make a decision right now. Maybe wait and see what type of weather we get this winter. If we don't have multiple snow days, maybe we can keep that May 25th date. We'd have to, if we're not going to keep a definite date, we would have to back out of having it at the Utz Arena and still have it here at the school. But it would still give the seniors an option of possibly having it May 25th instead of waiting a week later, depending on snow. So, as a board, we're going to continue to discuss it and hold our decision on a graduation date till a later time. We also want to have that discussion with Mr. Wassler as well.
Thank you.
Did I cover everything there?
You covered, yep.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Maylie. First up is presentations and celebrations. Mr. Cherry.
I am going to ask Mr. Bond to come forth. He has done a lot in terms of our robotics class. I think he was here one other time before. And this year, his group went to the Maker Fair in New York and became instant celebrities. So, I wanted him to come before us this evening, not only to thank him for all his work and the things that he's doing with his students, but also to showcase some of the things that they are doing.
When I was asked to be here, I think they said there would be a video. Is that not correct?
We didn't get the video.
Okay. So, if there had been a video, it was the chief educator for Maker Ed, which is National Organization for Making Happen in high schools and cities across the world, the country, the world. And he was endorsing what we had done here at Dover. And him and hundreds of people who saw this project and the work they had done couldn't believe this was done at a public high school anywhere. So, everyone involved should feel very proud of that, whether it's the kids who made it or the teachers who taught them all along the way or the board members who make the big decisions. So, some very good things came from that. So, I've written down just a summary of a few of them. Because of being involved in the Maker Fair last year and this year, there are eight different professionals in the industry from all around the country who have collaborated with us in some way or another. Either came to visit our students and get feedback on what they're building and how they're building it and how they should build it differently in the future, or Skyping with them just to congratulate. I think one of the coolest ones was that when Angie Mason of the York Daily Record ran a story on the work they had done, it got picked up by the AP. Miguel Venezuela, who invented the first pancake printer in the world, saw this in California and wanted to talk to our students and find out how they did it, why they did it. And so, so that he could meet our schedule, he woke up at 5:00 AM California time and talked to us about the work that they had done. He was amazed because he had solved the problem a different way than they had, and he thought, wow, why didn't I do it that way? And, you know, these are the minds of our students coming up with these things. Really fantastic. Donald Dagan is a mechanical engineering instructor at Thaddeus Stevens. He came over to see the work that they had done. Two engineers from Weldon Solutions, which is right across from Voith Hydro down East Berlin Road, they came to see the work that was done. Three product designers from Florida, from a design company, collaborated with them on how to make the user interface so that people could understand it more easily. And on and on and on. Very proud of all those things that happened because we were able to network and reach out and show our work to the world. Isn't the Internet a wonderful thing when it does things like that? We also got offers from several companies to do things. There's a company called Twilio, which specializes in data communication between cell phones and cellphone networks. And they gave us four SIM cards and free anything to beta test their new 3G data exchange. So, one of our projects this spring is going to be using that to send information from anywhere there's a 3G service, because they thought our project was really cool, were their words. There's a company called Arduino, which is sort of the main open source platform for computing in the open source community. They totally loved what we were doing. They want to feature us on their website. They want to give us free stuff. And on and on and on. Lots of good things are happening because of that. And for me, the proudest is that the head of Maker Ed invited me and my students, whoever I bring next year, to speak on the main stage at the Maker Fair in New York, which you have to understand draws tens of thousands of people, on the topic of how did we do what we did and how can others do it? And I can't imagine a better compliment from him for that. In case you're curious, our projects for this spring will be some of one of these five things. Either a self-driving car with GPS, a treadmill calibrator, a robot that actually plays tic-tac-toe against you, like with a marker. Very excited about that one. A camera stabilizer for a big rocket that Spring Grove launches, and a bird scaring device for blueberry farmers. Apparently, that's a very important tool. That's the one we're going to use the 3G uplink for, so they can change the bird calls daily because apparently the birds get used to a certain call. I don't know. So, are there any questions before I conclude? I did bring along the pancake printer. It was right front and center, and I thought that was kind of distracting for everything else that's going on. So, I'm just going to leave it there, and I'll come get it tomorrow if you'd like to check it out. But it printed pancakes successfully for two days straight. And when it does that, it doesn't just make a splat, it makes these intricate designs based on how it's set. And that's what the students did and developed and made from scratch. And it's really incredible. It's a way of visualizing math, you know? I think one of the coolest...
Yeah, it is cool.
One of the best moments for me is when we were here at the Maker Fair. I really wish we had the video. There was a NASA engineer, because NASA was there, of course, and there was a little five-year-old kid, and they both had the exact same look on their face as they were watching this thing print pancakes, just this look of awe. And I thought that was really amazing. So, for future steps now... Oh, that's... My next steps will be to continue doing what we're doing, but also, there's been a tremendous outreach from local teachers, regional, and even on the national level of how are you doing this and how can we do it? And I'm working on trying to develop some steps to get what we're doing at Dover into the hands of people everywhere, of course, with our name attached to it, so that we get that PR. So, hopefully, down the road, but we'll see. That's all.
Thank you.
Matt Willison from Boyer and Ritter is here to present our annual financial report and audit to the board of directors. If you could sit because of the microphone, that would be great.
Got it. Good evening. My name's Matt Willison. I'm the principal in charge of your external financial statement audit. Thank you for having me here this evening. So, the audit process began several months ago, generally in the, you know, in the August timeframe. And the goal of our audit is to take a look at the financial statements that Jen and her financial team prepare and express an opinion as to whether or not your financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is important for, you know, external parties, including people who buy your bonds for regulatory purposes, because you receive federal money. It's important that you have an audit. You're required to have it. So, we, and certainly, your public is interested in making sure that you're spending their dollars right as well. So, our goal, as we endeavor into the audit, is to take a look at your internal controls. We take everything, every year, we take a fresh look at the processes that you use to generate these financial statements. You're seeing information on a monthly basis in terms of the board reports, and then it culminates in this document that you have here in front of you tonight. There's four areas that we report on. And the first area is the one where we express an opinion on your financial statements. And I'm pleased to report tonight that the district has earned an unqualified or an unmodified opinion, which is basically the highest opinion that a CPA firm can render on your external financial statements. That would be the expectation of the financial community and anybody interested in reading your financial statements. So, congratulations. The second area that we look at, because you're required to have a government auditing standards audit, and you're required to have that because you have approximately $2 million in federal awards each year, is we're required to look at the internal controls over financial reporting, and we're required to issue a report, a separate report on that. And in that report, it disclosed no findings. There's no additional issues that need to be required, communicated to you under our professional standards. So, you've got a clean bill of health under your government auditing standards report as it applies to the internal controls over financial reporting. So, you know, the first is an opinion on your statements, like are these in compliance with GAAP? The second part is, are the processes and systems that you're following adequate so that you can have a repeat performance? So, if there are errors in your financial statements, will your processes catch those and deter any kind of errors from occurring in the future? The second big area, so those are the first two, and then we move over to the compliance side. And as I said before, you receive approximately $2 million a year in federal award, and those come in the form of your school lunch program. You have free and reduced lunches. You have your title programs, Title I, Title II. You have your special education funding is another. So, what we looked at this year is we looked at your IDEA funding, and we issued a clean opinion on your compliance with regard to that. Now, the one thing I will pass along, one point of note, is that this is the first year since Boyer and Ritter's been working with you that you've qualified as what they call a low-risk audity. If you look over past audit reports, you'll see that there were some significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in your audit reports that your financial team has been working on over the years and has, one by one, worked to eliminate any of the issues. So, this year, you have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and you have not had them for the past two years, and therefore, you're allowed to have a, under the federal, in the eyes of the federal government, you're a lower-risk audity, which is an accomplishment and certainly something that I know Jen and her team absolutely, that's the bar for them in terms of where they want to be on a go-forward basis. So, that's good news. The other change from the federal compliance standpoint is that this year, you implemented the uniform grant guidance organizationally. That would have required you to have adopted some additional policies and procedures. If you remember, over the last couple of years, we've been issuing management letter comments, kind of letting you know that these, there's some changes as it applies to some of the federal rules with regard to procurement, conflict of interest policies, travel reimbursement policies, as well as the management of overall federal awards that were coming down the pike. And the district responded appropriately, implemented the policies, and therefore, when we go and we talk about the fact that you have no findings in your current year compliance audit, that's as a result of the actions that you took over the year. So, you have a clean bill of health with regard to your compliance opinion. We issue a clean opinion on that. And then, when we turn around and we look at the internal controls over compliance, you know, those processes that make sure that you're complying on an annual basis, you get a clean bill of health there, too. And that's evidenced by the fact that you took action during the year to stay in line with the uniform grant guidance changes. So, overall, you know, a very, very good audit report. There's another letter there that kind of talks about some of the background, how the audit went overall at a high level. The audit went very smoothly. I think this is the earliest that we've, as long as Boyer and Ritter's been doing the audit here, that we've been here. A lot of times, it's been, you know, in the December through February timeframe. So, we're very pleased that the audit could be concluded in a more normal timeframe this year. Are there any questions? Again, Boyer and Ritter's very pleased with how the audit went, and you got basically the highest marks on all four categories.
Thank you. I just want to take an opportunity to thank Jen and her team for all the tremendous work that they've done since I've been here to get us to this point. So, thank you.
You deserve a round of applause. Do you have anything else, Mr. Cherry?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the agenda to our communications category. First up is our student report with Ms. Fox and Ms. Barnes. Ladies.
So, I'll be starting with Dover Elementary. On November 11th, their PTO sponsored the Dover-Fundrazer, which raised $4,582. This week and next week, Monday and Tuesday, our teachers will be holding morning and evening fall parent conferences. Students that ride buses with excellent bus behavior are rewarded with 10 minutes of extra recess on November 14th. And they recently had the end-of-quarter reward for students as part of the PBIS school-wide initiative. Live Elementary School, parent-teacher conferences are scheduled during this week, November 14th through the 18th and November 21st through the 23rd. Teachers are offering times before and after school to accommodate parents' busy schedules. Live had over 425 visitors at their annual PTO Grand Breakfast on Friday, November 11th. Students and special guests were celebrated with a pancake breakfast, prepared and served by their PTO parent volunteers and Live staff. Live and the PTO are coordinating a Toys for Tots toy collection drive from Tuesday, November 29th through Friday, December 16th. If anyone is interested, you may drop off any toy donations to the Live office, and they will be displayed in the lobby until pickup during the week of December 19th. Toys will be distributed to children in the local York County area. Moving to North Salem Elementary School, despite the rain, North Salem Elementary had over 500 participants at their PTO book fair and trunk-or-treat events held on October 27th. On October 28th, Representative Seth Grove visited North Salem Elementary. He issued our Soaring Eagle Awards for the first marking period and educated the third through sixth graders on the election process. On November 11th, a school celebration was held for all students and staff, members at North Salem in recognition of the recent school performance profile scores. A SPP party in the gym was held for students, and they had the opportunity to sing karaoke, dance, play basketball, and enjoy a treat. And then, for Waggles Town Elementary, after eight weeks of preparation, Grade 6 participated in the culminating event of Biz Town on November 10th. Many students were heard sharing frustration with not being able to get their job done due to numerous interruptions, because they learned more than lessons, more than just lessons on economy. November is our salute to the military. We are writing letters, making cards, and/or drawing pictures for various veterans and service personnel in conjunction with Veterans Day. We will be sending items to people we know, as well as to 300 Coast Guard recruits. To date, we have collected 245 items for the district food drive. For the intermediate school, the first marking period ended in the intermediate school is very proud to have 125 students make distinguished honor roll and 184 students make regular honor roll. We will have an honor roll breakfast to celebrate their hard work and reward these students for the effort they put into their schoolwork this Friday. Conferences are scheduled for this week and next week. The teachers are excited to meet with parents and hold conversations about their child's schooling at the intermediate school. This past Friday, our web leaders hosted the Fresh School Dance of the Year. The students all wore neon and were extremely polite and respectful. This was the largest number of students we've had attend a dance, and their behavior was exceptional. So, thank you, web leaders, Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Leedy, for giving us a great night. For the high school, DHS recognized its October Students of the Month at a ceremony on November 9th. Students of the Month are Emily Hogan, Casey Norris, Judd Picano, Jessica Parr, Tyler Senja, Alex Di Giovanni, Zach Knoll, Toby Gobler, and Hannah Williams. Congressman Scott Perry visited DHS last week. He toured the school, visiting with staff and students in several CTE classrooms, the new Innovative Learning Center and robotics classrooms. Tomorrow, seniors will participate in the Real Life Program sponsored by Junior Achievement. This program focuses on financial literacy with positive decisions. The drama program will be performing Our Town on November 18th and 19th of this week, which is Thursday, which is Friday and Saturday. The music program will be heading to Hawaii next week. They're performing at the Pearl Harbor Memorial, as well as several other venues. And finally, Phase 1 of the Innovative Learning Center is almost complete. Furniture is being delivered in early December, and an open house is tentatively planned for December 12th.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions from the board members tonight?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment to Ms. Barnes. Want to recognize you for your article in New York Daily Record the other day. I thought it was very well-written and showed a positive light to what was a very negative week for this county. On that line, I would also like to recognize Mr. Portellus for taking that opportunity to recognize a need in his class. And even though it's not English-related, I thought it was very inspiring of him to allow his students to vent their frustrations and their feelings in a positive way with the sidewalk talk. I kind of, I went on Saturday morning and had a chance to read some of the quotes, and they were very impressive. And I understand that it wasn't limited to just the students, that the quotes ended up being expanded upon throughout the day, if I think, if I'm correct on that.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
That more people from outside the class actually contributed to this quote. So, while not an educational opportunity per se, I think was definitely a teachable moment and what an awesome opportunity. So, and again, thank you for that article. It was very well-written.
Thank you.
I also wanted to follow up on something that Ms. Barnes brought up, the Real Life Program tomorrow. I'm actually going to volunteer and help with that tomorrow. I'm planning to be there, but they still need volunteers. So, if anybody in this room has a burning desire to get in there and talk about financial literacy and work on budgets with high school students, which can be a challenge, but it's a great day. I did it last year. If you can do it, be there at 7:35 tomorrow at the high school auditorium. JA would love to have you. They still need a few more people to help with that. So, you know something about budgets, Jen.
I do.
You have other duties, I'm sure. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Ladies, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go do homework and other stuff if you'd like. It's up to you. Thank you. Okay. Next up is our public comment period. This is our first public comment period, which is a three-minute period. Again, I stress that this is a comment period. Therefore, the board will not be responding to any questions at this time. You have three minutes to speak. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the podium, the desk with the microphones, and state your name and address for the public record.
I'm never one to be bashful. Jeff Shanner, you say address?
Yes, please.
2885 Skytop Trail in Dover, obviously. Dr. Cherry?
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Shanner, S-H-O-E-N-E-R. I'm here to talk a little bit about what occurred on the 11th of November. And as Dr. Cherry and I talked there on the phone on Saturday, you know, sometimes it's too much social media, but there's a time here where I think it needs to be looked at. I'm going to start off, there's a Facebook post that was sent to our family of the kids in the cafeteria. I did not realize in our school that we allowed kids to stand either on a chair and/or the table and yell and carry on. Now, I would say, adventure, yes, everybody in this room here probably stood on a chair or a table to change a light bulb. And I can assure you, in that video, they were not changing no light bulbs. Also, in that video, they were saying more than we are equal. They were saying all lives matter. Now, we all understand what that is an offshoot of, okay? No sense of kidding each other about it. In my opinion, that activity should have been stopped right then and there. If those youth want to protest, they can find the nearest door and hope it doesn't hit them on the backside and go to a sidewalk. They then proceeded to go down the hallway yelling and carrying on, and that's on the video I sent to Dr. Cherry. Very clearly, on two occasions, they stated, "We are equal, all lives matter." Two times, you can clearly hear in that video, "All lives matter." Again, that's an offshoot of Black Lives Matter. We then, and I believe, compound the situation by later in the day announcing that we're going to have a photo opportunity. And this, I do not have a photo of, but I have been told that one of the youth in those pictures raised her hand as in the Black Panther. We all understand what that means. If that picture is true, I believe that there should be some discipline rendered. Now, I read, and this is probably the part, it's Dr. Cherry and Mr. Eifert, you and I talked, that infuriated me the most. I read this email that was sent at 9:54 AM on the 11th. And I believe that we have lied to the people by omission, because this email clearly states what the students said, "We are equal." Yet, if you look at that video and listen, they said a lot more than that. Unfortunately, these youth have been caught up in all the stuff going on in our society, and we have to understand and accept that and address that. However, now the cat's out of the bag. So, now, is our policy going to be, if a group of kids want to come together tomorrow and walk down the hall and yell, "Jesus loves you," that's going to be tolerated? Or, how about, "Hands up, don't shoot"? Are we going to allow that? Or, how about, "Trump is our president"? I mean, where are we going to draw the line? I guess I'm old-school, I'm 49, because I can tell you, if I'd have done that, we'd have been in the principal's office, and that would have been the fun part. The bad part would have been when our parents got there to get us. This email has me the most torched up about not telling the people exactly what was said. There's a comment in here about a concrete plan of action. I'd like to know what the concrete plan was had there been a fight breakout, because I found out yesterday there was more police officers in the high school. I would say the concrete plan lacked a little bit of Portland cement.
Mr. Shanner, I need you to wrap up your comments. Your three-minute period.
Yep. I would ask, I would ask real quickly, I believe the principal, and he may be here tonight, I don't even know this gentleman, that he sent an email out with the whole story, what was said. I would actually encourage the school to bring all the students together and explain that how a democracy works, which is really what starts a lot of this stuff, and that you have winners and losers in the election, and it's a proper way to behave. So, with that, my time's up. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shanner. Anybody else for public comment? Do you have a parent with you tonight?
I do not.
Okay, and what is your age?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah. Name's Drew Schaefer, live on 2775 Admiral Springs Drive. Just wrote something here regarding the graduation date. We had assembly a little bit ago saying, or Mr. Wassler announcing it was on May 25th, and that's what we all thought it was going to be. And then, we heard some stuff was going on, and like Mrs. Maylie said, it would be moved to a later date that you guys would talk about it. So, I just, we all came together and wrote something quick. In previous years at DHS, holidays have been built into snow days within the breaks. Since the graduation date has already been publicized, students have already started preparing and contacting family members by the date to be able to speak and prepare ahead of time. Changing the graduation to a later date will cause problems with students' family members and their means of travel. Would it be possible to utilize those days over holidays as snow days to keep the graduation date the same? Also, in addition to the new proposed date for graduation, the suggested venue would be added, would be an added problem. Graduation at the high school had many problems last year. Some of those issues included parking, unorganized seating, and weather. If we would have inclement weather, graduation would be held inside. If we would have inclement weather, graduation would be held inside. That means that all parents and family members would have to move inside, resulting in undesirable seating arrangements. Families would be split up into two different locations, and it would make a day-to-remember uncomfortable day." Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing nobody on the move, we'll move on in the agenda then to our board president's communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some personnel matters and also to gather some additional information on the graduation situation. Thus, the reason we removed that from tonight's consent agenda. I do not have anything else to add to the communication at this time, so we'll move on to our approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2016 board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Benko will take the vote. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2016 board planning meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. And the motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda tonight, before we vote on anything, we'll go through each area of the agenda to address any questions or comments that there might be regarding the individual topics. So, our first category is curriculum and professional development. Are there any questions about the two items which appear in that area?
I just have a question out of curiosity. On the student survey about drug and alcohol education program, I assume, Lisa, is that your daughter?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know if she's going to be sharing those results, the results of the survey with the district?
No, it's part of her project.
Okay.
According to the email that I went back and forth with her, it's just part of her culminating project, so we are following policy in this instance and so forth.
Okay. All right. Good luck to her.
Yep. Any other questions in that category? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the next category. We do not have anything under facilities, so it would be human and fiscal resources. Any questions there?
Just wanna make a quick comment on the property valuations, item 906. The increase there is 1.6 million since the last assessment that was done in July, so our property valuations in the district are continuing to increase. Been several times in a row now where there's been increase in valuation, so that's a good thing. It means there's more properties coming under the tax rolls, selling properties of higher value, increasing in value, so equates to a little more revenue coming our way from the property taxes.
Any other questions or comments? There are two items in that category that will be separate votes tonight, the treasurer's report and the audit report. Anything else?
Just wanted to make a comment as well regarding, we've talked a lot about PlanCon money, and you know, some of these reports include some of the PlanCon discussions that we've had over the time. We're gonna continue to look at that at our planning meeting on Thursday night about continued PlanCon money that's coming our way here, and you know, we'll be bringing some recommendations back to the board then about what to do with that money, whether we set that aside, or you know, or exactly what we're gonna do with that. So, look forward to that to come.
We do not have anything else under Safe and Supportive Schools for tonight, so unless there are any other questions or comments about any of the items on the consent agenda, we will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion?
Does that move? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Okay, motion carries.
I just wanna take an opportunity to introduce to everyone employees in the district, Mrs. Christina Jacoby. She will be our new director of HR, so give a wave. So, as we say goodbye to Dave, we say hello to Christina. So, welcome to our district. We look forward to working with you.
Welcome. And Dave has a very, very big smile on his face back there.
I think he's looking at this. And he's got a countdown on his phone he'll need to show you, so if you get a chance, go visit him, he'll tell you the days, the amount of days, hours, and minutes he has left here, so. And seconds. Let me not forget that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next vote. Is there a motion to approve the annual audit for the period ending June 30th, 2016? Oops, I skipped the treasurer's report, I'm sorry, Jim. I don't wanna mess you up.
No.
Oh, that was that one. Okay, motion to approve the annual audit for the period ending June 30th, 2016. Sorry.
Does that move? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next is our Act One Tax Resolution vote. Is there a motion to approve the board resolution not to exceed the index of 3.4% adjusted index for the 2017-18 budget and to grant approval to submit resolution and preliminary PDE 2028 budget to PDE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion on this? Hearing none. And the motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to the board assigned representative reports. First up will be the Dover Eagle Foundation, Mr. Cherry.
Our committee actually met earlier this week because of a conflict on Thursday, so we did get a letter from the United Way Foundation indicating that we did receive donations during their campaign drive. We don't have the amount yet, but hopefully in our next meeting, we'll be able to announce that, so we wanted to publicly thank all those individuals who, through the United Way, gave to the Dover Eagle Foundation. Once again, remember, our mission is always to grant scholarships and also grants to teachers, so with this money, we'll be able to turn that around and be able to do those things. Our golf tournament continues to be planned. As I announced before, it will be May 26th at Honey Run Golf Course. We're currently working on all the letters of interest and registrations forms, so I'll thank Mrs. Strasba for heading that committee for us, and we think it's gonna be a fun time for all the participants that are, that'll be there golfing course that day.
Do you have the miniature golf course set up yet for me, Bobby? Okay, thank you. Thank you. I asked the last time, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Okay, any questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the York Adams Academy with Mr. Emmig.
Our last meeting was Tuesday, October 25th. Part of that meeting was, we discussed the budget for York Adams Academy, and that is still an ongoing conversation. At that point, we had four seats open out of the 12, and graduation, winter graduation is set for Tuesday, January 24th at 7:00 p.m. And as of right now, there will be no meeting in December.
Thank you, Mr. Emmig. Any questions for Mr. Emmig? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the York County School of Technology with Mr. Delauter.
I was unable to make the last meeting due to a family emergency, but I do know they did talk more about the budget upcoming, for the upcoming year, so I haven't seen anything from them yet concerning that, but soon as we do, we'll let everybody know.
Any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to LIU and Special Education with Mr. Cherry.
Nothing at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry? All right, Legislative, Mr. Rollhauser.
They say good things take time, so I guess this is a good thing. PlanCon came through with $1,831,903.40, and I'm under the impression there's still more coming.
Any questions for Mr. Rollhauser?
Thanks for all your hard work.
We like the good news. Thank you, Joe. Okay, PSBA, Mrs. Brenton, she's unable to be with us tonight. I don't know if you wanted an update on that, Mr. Cherry?
Yes, yes, you did send me some news. Wanted to remind everyone that today was the last day for the legislative session. Pension and charter school bills are all dead at this point in time, so she will update us more as the year continues.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. Herman is not here for the Dover Industrial Development Committee. Is Mr. Benton here? I know he answers some of that stuff.
Thank you.
There he is. Mr. Benton, did you have anything tonight?
Yeah, the, that committee is moving forward on a lot of different processes in the township with some different roads that will be added. We're actually working with work economic development to come in, to run a special suit, to look at where in the township they can break out zones for specific industry, commercialize or industry to be happening within the district. The next meeting will be canceled, the December's meeting will be canceled, and it won't get back up until the end of January, but it's probably in the last three months we've seen more movement than in the first year that it was in place.
Any questions for Mr. Benton? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the Critical Response Drill Report with Mr. DeChau.
No new information at this time.
Any questions for Mr. DeChau? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our superintendent's report, Mr. Cherry.
Yep, just a few things. Once, I wanna congratulate all those who participated in our fall sports, and a special thank you to the football team. Jared and I were there last night, so we started our onslaught of turkey dinners, so we had our first one for the year, and I think there's many more to come, but we wanted to thank the football team for having us out there. It was a really nice occasion, and we celebrated all of our 7th through 12th grade students who participated in football. My last comment really goes back to last month, and it happened during public comment, and it dealt with the notion that the district doesn't have curriculum, so it's kind of been gnawing at me for the last month with regards to that, and I kind of felt like, to some extent, we were smeared all over the place, and I wanna take that misconception and add a little background to that. And just remind people, at the end of the day, we all have curriculum, whether you're in Pennsylvania or any other state, because you've got standards. So, you know, we have standards for every content area, we have standards for every grade, so regardless of whether you have a book in hand, we always have curriculum because that's what all our teachers work with every single day. That's what they anchor their lessons in, that's what they talk about during their PLCs, that's what they talk about during their grade planning sessions. It's the actual resources that go along with them that I think, as a district, we have worked very hard and allowed us to spend money over the last years to support those particular standards. So, let me remind all of us and say, you have approved a new ELA program for not only K-5 students, but also 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students. You have allowed us to adopt the updates to our everyday math program, and you also added a new program for our students with CMP3 for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. You've also allowed us to provide FOS science kits for all of our K-8 grades, or not K-8, I think it's 3-8. No, it is K-8, I apologize, so that they could take some of the interactive science books that they have and actually do some investigations with them. But even on top of that, we also have opportunities that I would also say aid to our curriculum, whether it's outdoor ed that our students participate in. Once again, that's part of the curriculum, whether it's the field trips that some of our high school kids take when they go out to learn about different business, different business opportunities, those are also curriculum pieces. Or it's even just the field trips that our elementary students take, where they go to the Apple Farm, or they go to Harrisburg to see how our legislators are working. All of those are items and pieces of the curriculum. So, to sit here and hear during public comment someone say that we don't have that, and shame on us, is obviously someone who's misinformed as a citizen because we have done our due diligence. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. You know, do we have a possible, a sequence or a process by which we have, we know that every single standard is actually being taught? Maybe we need to boost those resources up. But I just wanted to, like I said, address that and let you know that you all have done your job in terms of providing us opportunities to set aside monies every single year to purchase resources for the staff when they need to plan and they need to address the standards. So, I just, I kinda needed to unleash that a little bit just because I thought it was a misconception, and I thought it painted us in a poor picture when you, as the board of directors, have been very generous over the last, at least, two years that I've been here in allowing us to spend and buy those things for our staff, so.
Thank you.
That's my piece.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the miscellaneous category for any other comments or observations from board members tonight.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that next Tuesday, Mr. Delauter and the band will be moving onward to their trip to Hawaii, so we wish the band and everybody going along much success and a safe and healthy and happy trip.
And Renaissance as well.
Want to take a minute to also say thanks for the invitation to the Fall Sports Awards held last week at the high school. Congratulations to all the participants and the coaches involved in that. It's great to have the opportunity to have that be part of our educational experience here. Special shout-out to the golf team, which had an amazing fall season. I think only one loss, if I remember correctly. And to the boys soccer team, which went to district playoffs for the first time in 40 years, I believe, was the buzz there, so congratulations especially to those two, but just thanks for the invitation to come out and see what's going on there, so thank you for that.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our next public comment period. This is a two-minute period. Again, this is comment period, and if you would like to state anything tonight, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing nobody on the move, we'll move on to adjournment. Our future meeting announcements, we do have for the board tonight, we will have an executive session immediately following this meeting to address a student disciplinary matter. Then, our next board committee meetings will be this Thursday, November 17th at 6:00 p.m., and our board planning meeting will be November 17th at 7:00 p.m. And then, our board reorganization meeting will be held on December 1st at 7:00 p.m. at North Salem Elementary School, so please note the change in location on that. If there's nothing else tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes? Yes?
opposed?
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.[1787.23]